All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the February meeting of the Louisville Air Pollution Control District Board. We're going to take a few minutes and ask for your patience to make sure everybody's in place, and then we'll get going here. I'll call the meeting to order in just a second. Andy and Rach, are we good to go? To start?
Yes, I believe so. Andy, don't see Carl yet?
No, I don't see him yet. If I do see him, I will bring him in immediately.
Do we need to have a roll call?
Not this stage.
Okay, then, I will call the meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing is held by Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board. It's called a order and it's being held pursuant to KRS Chapter 77 and District Regulations. Notice of this hearing has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via video teleconference due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Instructions on making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be concise. All statements will become part of the hearing record. There are two agreed board orders to be reviewed today. The first, would the staff please present the agreed board order with the Metropolitan Sewer District? Mr. Gravette?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings for the board's consideration an agreed board order with the Metropolitan Sewer District, known locally as MSD. MSD operates the sewage collection and treatment facilities for Jefferson County. The district issued a notice of violation to MSD on November 4th, 2019, for violations of District Regulation 1.13, Control of Objectionable Odors. The violation was issued for a series of odor complaints in July and August of 2019, primarily in the Chickasaw, California and Park Duvall neighborhoods. Residents complained to the district approximately forty-six times in that period of odors they described as rotten eggs, feces, and sewage. District compliance officers responded to these complaints and during their investigations observed the odors and determined they were coming from the storm drains in the combined sewers, storm water collection system, and from the Morris Foreign Water Quality Treatment Center. This agreed board order requires MSD to take multiple actions to return to compliance and to prevent the recurrence of these types of violations. These actions include developing odor control plans for both the Morris Foreman Facility and the collection system, a maintenance and repair plan for the collection system, and a plan for improving communications between MSD and the public. MSD will provide board orders to, will provide reports to the board after it completes certain milestones outlined in the order. The intent of these requirements is to create a lasting solution for the community rather than a Band-Aid fix for one or two spots. MSD has worked with us since we issued the NOV on scoping these projects and has agreed to the ambitious plans outlined in the order. Due to the expansive scope of these commitments, the district did not seek a monetary penalty in this case. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Ms. Hamilton has a representative of the Metropolitan Sewer District registered to make a statement this morning?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hamilton, is any member of the public registered to make an oral statement?
Yes, sir. Ms. Yolanda Walker? Mr. Purdon, can you find Miss Walker's presence for us?
I do not see her in the list unless she is dialed in with phone number only. I would need to know what phone number to look for. There are three participants with a phone number only in the list.
If they could raise their hand by dialing star three on their phone, that will help Mr. Purdon identify you.
And I'm not seeing any raised hands as of yet.
I'm afraid that we're unable to find Ms. Walker. We have call-in numbers, five zero two, ending in three seven seven.
And a five zero two, two, two one six number.
Ms. Hamilton, we, we can try again during the regular portion of the meeting during public comment if we're unable to locate her at this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walker.
Any, Ms. Hamilton, has any member of the public submitted a written statement?
No, sir, we did not receive any written statement.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other statements from the company or the public? If so, please raise your hand via teleconference and you will be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants' list. Please raise your hand via teleconference. This is a feature, is a feature you can find on the bottom of your screen or by pressing star three if joined by phone, and you will be called on. Ms. Hamilton, does anybody else wish to speak?
A moment, please. Andy, Ms. Walker's number ends in one seven two zero, if you could see that. If not, if you could open up the three lines and simply, we'll have three folks who can identify themselves. Ms. Walker is one of them.
Okay, I can't actually see the ending number, so I will start opening up. We only have two call-in users at the moment, so I will unmute those phones just a moment.
Thank you.
Telephone number five zero two, three seven seven, you are unmuted. Is this Ms. Walker?
Take that as a no.
Phone number five zero two, two one six, you are unmuted. Is this Ms. Walker?
No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Purdon. I do appreciate it. We will, if Ms. Walker is able to join us, offer her the opportunity to speak later proceeding.
Are there any questions by board members? All right, moving on, would the staff please present their agreed board order with Cosmos Cement Company LLC? Mr. Gravette?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The district brings for the board's consideration an agreement with the Cosmos Cement Company, which operates a cement manufacturing plant pursuant to a Title V permit. The facility is located near the southwest corner of Jefferson County on Dixie Highway. The district alleges Cosmos violated a mercury limit in their Title V permit. The limit, fifty-five pounds of mercury per million tons of clinker produced, calculated on a rolling thirty-day basis, is monitored with a continuous emission monitor at the facility. On August 28th, 2020, the Cosmos submitted their semi-annual Title V compliance report along with a letter reporting a violation of the mercury limit. Their letter reported that in early April 2020, their coal ash supplier reduced the amount of fly ash available to Cosmos due to the, a COVID-19-related drop in electrical demand. This required Cosmos to alter the types of products they were producing as well as the mixture of ingredients in the cement being produced. In early May, after the production changes had begun, Cosmos monitoring data indicated that mercury emissions were increasing. In response to the observed increase in emissions, Cosmos made changes in their control system to attempt to better control mercury emissions. On May 26, 2020, the thirty-day rolling mercury emission limit of fifty-five pounds per million tons of clinker produced was exceeded. After the exceedance began, Cosmos continued to investigate and attempt corrective actions. On June 5th, 2020, the thirty-day rolling mercury emissions peaked at sixty-eight pounds of mercury per million tons of clinker produced. Cosmos continued to make improvements to their control strategy and has not exceeded the standard since June 10th, 2020. As mentioned, Cosmos attributed the cause of this violation to a COVID-19-related disruption to their raw materials. While the U.S. EPA implemented a COVID enforcement policy, the district did not. As a result, the civil penalty assessment for this violation was not adjusted on the basis of COVID-19. The company has agreed to pay penalties of $37,500 to resolve the notice of violation. The district recommends the board adopt the order as proposed.
Ms. Hamilton has a representative of Cosmos Cement Company LLC registered to make a statement?
No, sir.
Ms. Hamilton, is any member of the public registered to make an oral statement?
No, sir.
Ms. Hamilton, is any member of the public submitted a written statement?
No, sir.
Are there any other statements from the company or the public? If so, please raise your hand via teleconference and you will be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants' list. Please raise your hand via teleconference. This is a feature you can find on the bottom of your screen or by pressing star three if joined by phone, and you will be called upon. Ms. Hamilton, is anyone else wish to speak?
Just a clarification, was that report an annual report, a quarterly report?
Dr. May, it was a semi-annual report.
So is there anything to be anticipatory for their next report, you know, so that way?
We've received no indication that report will come in soon, but from what we understand, that the last time they had an exceedance was at the beginning of June of last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions by board members?
I have a question. Were there any health concerns in the community?
So we didn't, there was no star exceedance, and that's kind of the program we use to look at, you know, direct health effects that way. Mercury is a neurotoxin, and it gets, you know, the reason it's regulated is reduce health effects, but they've got a big property and a long distance to the endpoint, so we don't have any reason to suspect that there was a direct health impact on somebody, but, you know, it is a neurotoxin released into the environment.
And just a clarification, the star program that Mr. Gravette mentioned is the District Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program?
One more question. Is there ever a time besides the regular monitoring, you know, in this case semi-annually, you know, I guess what I would be concerned or would propose is that when something has reached an exceedance, that then, that would implement a repeat checks at a sooner date? Is, and is that ever something that we request or mandated or something we can propose for future monitoring and for compliance?
That's certainly something we can take into consideration for future orders. We have a regulation for upset conditions that requires immediate reporting. The, the way this happened, it didn't really fit the, that reg as well, so they reported it under their semi-annual reporting, but in certain instances, the permit writers will put in quarterly reports or other programs, federal programs will have quarterly reporting.
And I know that you said it, but I didn't quite gather why they, what their explanation was for the exceedances.
So the, they attributed it to a reduction in the amount of fly ash available, and it, it caused them to have to change the mixtures of cement they produce, and this is a thirty-day rolling average limit, so the changes in that, their normal production caused the increase in emissions.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Well, just one follow-up question to that. I would have thought a lot of the mercury comes from the fly ash. So why was there an increase in mercy, mercury when there's less fly ash into the mix?
The, the chemistry of their process is getting outside of my expertise, and I would have to defer that to the company. These are recorded on a, a continuous emission monitor in stack, so that's kind of the end of my expertise on that.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, that's not much of an answer, Mr. Dr. Coburn.
Well, here's another question. They're reporting, semi-annual reporting. When, when does that do? I assume the report they turned in was on time.
Yes, it's on time. It's, the reports are due sixty days after the period, so the next one will be due at the end of February, beginning of March.
Okay, good, thanks. We'll end, end on a positive note there where you knew the answer.
There being, all right, is there any, are any other questions? There being no further statements or questions, this public hearing is adjourned. I will now call the regular meeting of the Louisville Metro Air Pollution Control Board to order. Due to COVID-19 outbreak, we are conducting the monthly February board meeting via video teleconference today. Call to order, wanna now conduct a roll call. Board members that are present on this teleconference, when I call your name, please say here. You're gonna forgive me if I don't get this all right, because I don't have a list. Dr. May? Present?
I am present.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm being formal here. Dr. Coburn?
Yeah, I'm here.
Ms. Allen? Ms. Allen, you're on mute?
I, I hit it four times. I'm here.
Mr. Robbie White?
So, White, I'm present. Okay.
I don't have Keith's last name out here. I do not know it. I apologize.
Here, Keith Joy.
Mr. Sullivan, if you have the information that I sent this morning, hopefully all of that is included. If you go down a little bit further.
Mr. Joy?
Here.
Okay. So we have a quorum. Introductions, Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, good morning, and thank you again, Mr. Sullivan. I'm very pleased to make two introductions today. First, please join me in welcoming Melanie Brown to the district. Ms. Brown has a degree in international studies from Arcadia University and experience as an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer coordinator with Louisville Groves. She'll be working as a compliance officer in our community compliance section, and we're really glad to have her join us. Second, as many of you know, Keith has taken on a new assignment in the mayor's office, and he'll be joining us later in the meeting to tell you more about that. In the meantime, Byron Gary has agreed to be APCD's secretary treasurer while I serve as APCD's interim director. Byron earns his undergraduate degree in political science and philosophy from the University of Louisville and his jurist doctorate from the, pardon, jurist doctorate from the Brandeis School of Law there as well. Prior to joining the district, Mr. Gary served as a public defender, and I am very grateful to have Byron's help. Thank you.
Are there any public recognitions, Ms. Hamilton?
Good morning, there are. Thank you again. The board last met in person in February of 2020. It's hard to imagine what's happened in the last year, in particular as we left the Edison Room following the conclusion of that meeting, meeting. None of us had any idea of the scope of the looming pandemic crisis. Any year of change, personally, professionally, socially, politically. So today I want to recognize some of APCD's staff who stepped in and stepped up to make sure that we were able to do our work. I'm very grateful to our admin staff for continuing to man the office, scan applications, open mail, provide correspondence to staff who are working from home, make sure our bills get paid and our programs properly funded. I'm also very grateful to Andy Purdon, who became our WebEx master on the fly, outfitted our entire agency staff with laptops, and is always ready to troubleshoot our work from home computer woes when we need him. I'd like to recognize the staff in our community compliance section who've continued to meet the public to investigate and resolve complaints, conduct, as best as investigation in stage two that gap one E-decommissioning throughout 2020. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Byron Gary, who over the course of the last year served the health department as a loaned professional to help shoulder their COVID load. Margie Hazel is an engineer in our industrial permitting program is now on loan to assist with vaccine, vaccination-related logistics. These are a few of the district's very dedicated staff, and I'd like to thank them for their professional service and dedication. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, and congratulations to everybody who strive to make the, the district's success this year. Moving on to the approval of minutes, the minutes of the regular board meeting held on January 20th, 2021 were distributed electronically for review. Are there any changes to the minutes by board members? And hearing none. Hearing none, those will be adopted. Moving on to the public comment, item on the agenda, Ms. Hamilton, is anyone registered to make a comment?
Mr. Purdon, if you'll look for Ms. Walker real quickly here. Not directly. I spoke to Ms. Walker yesterday, and during our conversation, she expressed concern that MSD's required work here could potentially cause an increase in rates. That's a very understandable concern, and it is one that I will encourage her in a follow-up call to share with the board who meet on the fourth Monday of each month at one o'clock. And I'll also share that concern with MSD's chief operating officer, Brian Fena. Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton, has anyone provided written comments?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other members of the public that wish to make a brief comment on this teleconference? Please raise your hand via teleconference and you will be called on. This is a feature you can find on the participants' list by pressing star three or if joined by phone, and you will be called on. Ms. Hamilton, has anyone else wish to speak?
I don't see any raised hands at this moment, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
This completes a public comment portion of the meeting. Unfinished business, there is no unfinished business for this meeting. New business, agreed order with the Metropolitan Sewer District. The district has recommended that the board adopt the order with MSD. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
A motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will now take a roll call vote. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the order, and no if you do not. Steve Sullivan, yes. Dr. Jeffrey Coburn?
Yes.
Dr. Josephine Me?
Yes.
Candace Show White?
Yes.
Heather Allen?
Yes.
Keith Joy?
Yes.
The order is adopted. Agreed order with Cosmos Cement Company LLC. The district has recommended that the board adopt the order with Cosmos. Is there a motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt the order.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? I will now take a roll call vote. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the order and no if you do not. Steve Sullivan, yes. Dr. Jeffrey Coburn?
Yes.
Dr. Josephine Me?
It's actually May, but yes.
Candace Show White?
Yes.
Heather Allen?
Yes.
Keith Joy?
Yes.
The order is adopted. Moving on, many reports. I don't think any committees met.
That's correct.
All right, moving on to staff reports. Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you.
For the director's report?
As I mentioned earlier, Keith Kelly will be joining us, and I will turn the floor over to him to share the details of the community finally. A moment. Technology is always so challenging, and I do apologize. Keith is leaving one meeting and coming to another. Andy, you'll admit him when he features. That would be really helpful. So, as usual, there's quite a bit of work going on here at APCD. In line with our strategic initiative focused on how we communicate our work, which can be quite technical and scientific in a more relatable and understandable way. Michelle King, APCD Director of Program Planning, and I were invited by councilwoman Keisha Dorsey to join a pilot program with two University of Louisville professors in their English and Business classes, looking to improve the information provided in our gov delivery notices. We got some great feedback from a representative from REACT, that's the Rubber Town Emergency Action organization, who attended the initial meeting. And we look forward to working with Dr. Poole and Dr. Cody in their classes as they evaluate the content of our notices and the data metrics. Who gets our notices? Who opens our notices? Do they follow through to look at the information shown on our docket page? We will, of course, share the results of this project with the board and provide an update later this year on our own strategic communication incident. Ms. King, Mr. Gary, and I also attended a meeting in the Metro Council Public Works Committee last night and presented a brief update on ozone and reformulated gas for RFG. Due to time constraints, we were unable to answer all of their questions, and it looks like we'll be returning to the committee in the near future to try to explain why RFG is still a control measure necessary for our attainment of the ozone standard. I'd like to provide you an update on the district's risk management, RMP, rulemaking. We opened a forty-five day public comment period that ended on February the ninth. We received a suite of comments from industrial groups and Greater Louisville Inc. We are working on preparing the response to comment documents, and we will be holding a public hearing before the board's regular meeting on March eight, tenth. I'm sorry, March eighteenth. That meeting will start at ten a.m. We really hope that the public will join us at that meeting and provide comment to the board about the risk management program and the proposed revisions that the district has put out for public comment. I also want to let you know some of the things that are happening at the federal level. You know, air pollution ignores jurisdictional boundaries, so national-scale programs are foundational in helping to make the air cleaner everywhere, including here in Louisville. As just one example, a group of environmental and public health organizations filed suit to challenge EPA's decision in 2020 to retain the current seventy parts-per-billion ozone national ambient air quality standard due to flaws in the review process. The Coalition of Fifteen States, the District of Columbia, and the City of New York filed a similar challenge. I think you've probably heard me say I think you've probably heard me say before that the Clean Air Act's continuous improvement plan in action, it truly is. And that EPA is required to strengthen the standard when, after robust review, new health-based science demonstrates that doing so is necessary to protect public health and the environment. Because ozone is a challenge for the area from both an air quality and a public health standpoint. I will, from time to time, update you on the status of this litigation. And my colleague, Mr. Gary, has reminded me that the March board meeting is the 17th, not the 18th. So the Risk Management Plan Public Hearing will be held at 10 a.m. on March the 17th. Thank you for that. Mr. Purden, has Mr. Tally been able to join us?
Yes, he is on board.
Mr. Tally.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. You know, I appreciate Rachel giving me just a few minutes here because I wanted to take the opportunity to personally, in particular, thank our board members for all of your hard work, the support of the district, the work that the district does. Then your support of me personally and the work that I tried to do while I was there. I think we sent out some information, let everyone know. I had the opportunity and was asked to come work in the mayor's office as the mayor's Strategic Operations Officer. And it was a tough decision for me to make. Because I feel like we've done great work at the district. I worked with a great group of folks and stepping away from that was really tough. But I also saw the opportunity in these days and times, and I talked to you guys about it in terms of the work that we need to do from an environmental justice standpoint, from an equity standpoint, to do that on a much larger stage and be a part of implementing the kind of changes that will include environmental justice changes, but will include all of the equity issues that our community faces. And I felt that it was important work. I felt like it was work that I could have a positive impact on. And that's really what drove my decision. I have this opportunity, I want to thank all the folks I worked with at APCD. Just an incredible staff of folks. And I don't know, I think most folks understand this. But I won't take credit for any of the things that we've been able to do. I came to the district understanding air quality to the extent that I made the assumption that you really didn't want to see your air. Beyond that, I didn't know a lot. And so anything that we've been able to do, the progress that we've made, and we've made a lot of progress, really is attributable to the great folks who work at APCD. Michelle, Rachel, the rest of the management team, and in fact, everyone at the district. Just committed, dedicated group of folks who are working hard to make this a better community to live in. And I was privileged to play a small part in that. And so we'll see what happens with this new venture. It's good work. It's a great opportunity. Environmental justice will remain a key part of what I hope to accomplish in this new position because it's important to our community. It is one of those things that the community sees as an equity issue that impacts so many other things in their life. And it's just a large group of issues that impact our disadvantaged neighborhoods. And so we start to chip away with, start to chip away at them. Environmental justice is a big part of that because that's something they see every day, it's something they live with every day. And so I will do everything I can to help promote the work of the district via resource and asset Rachel, Michelle, and the rest of the team as we move forward. And again, just wanted to offer my thanks to the board in particular. Carl, thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it. And tell everybody just keep up the good work, you're in good hands. I know the good work will continue. And that part made it easy for me to make the decision because I wasn't worried about the future of the district. So having said that, just wanted to make those few points and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Rachel.
Mr. Tally, I'll speak for myself, but I hope I'm speaking on behalf of the board as well a little bit. Thank you for your leadership. You've done a great job and we certainly appreciate it. Can you give us an idea, what is the, what are the next steps with the district? Rachel, Ms. Hamilton, you're Acting Director. And is there a process that moves forward or?
Really, the way we stretch it is going in was they, this is really kind of like a temporary assignment. I think it will turn out to be long term, but because all of this is new, we don't know where we're headed. It was structured like that initially. I would hope and we'll talk with leadership about making some permanent decisions sooner rather than later so that we don't leave the district in limbo for any extended period of time. But we wanted to see how this worked out first before making any kind of permanent decisions.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, were you going to add some?
Yes, so while Keith is on this assignment, and until it becomes something more than that, you know, we have folks here at the district that I am absolutely privileged to work with. And we understand the work that's ahead of us. Very challenging work, and with board's leadership, we look forward to the new things that will come down on our plate. With the political change, there are going to be a lot of initiatives coming out of Washington. And again, we look forward to those national scale programs to clean because they clean Louisville's air too. By the way, that was Keith's dog, not my dog.
It wasn't.
I'll just bark here in a minute. Keith, would you like to have anything else? If not, we'll move on to our presentations.
No, thank you very much. I'm available to everyone. Email's still the same, my new phone number is 574-1750. If anybody needs to reach out, please feel free, I'm always available. Thanks, Rachel, that's it.
Thank you, Keith. So with Keith's new assignment, certainly we miss having him around. So we know where to find it. We won't hesitate to darken your door. With that, we do have two presentations today. The first is from APCD's Air Monitoring Program Manager, Billy DeWitt, on APCD's Auto GC. Followed by a presentation from our partners at KIPTA, Elizabeth Park and David Burton, on their long range planning. Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Sullivan, and board members. I will attempt to share my screen here. There we go. So the district would like to give you an update on our air toxics program. And for those of you unfamiliar, it's a new application of existing technologies, really merging them together to transform laboratory-grade equipment into a more compact system to provide near real-time data. And we refer to this system as an Auto GC. It's actually two GCs and GCs are, the Auto GC is Automated Gas Chromatograph. And these produce near real-time data, as I mentioned, to measure volatile organic compounds. And just a timeline of the project, this, the current, the first Auto GC system that was installed by APCD was at our firearms training site. We now refer to that as our Algonquin Parkway site. That was in September 2017. In January of 2018, we hired a chemist to operate the equipment and evaluate the data. Then February of August that year was a period of field evaluation to see how well the equipment operated. Later in that year, really for a good half of a year, the vendor consolidated analytical systems, removed the Auto GC in two phases for modifications and upgrades. And these really did help the system perform better. So as you can see, we're sort of, it's a new technology that we're evaluating and refining over time. Again, in July to the December of 2019, we're testing and really refining the data management system. In January of 2020, we implemented a full set of QCQA procedures. Now, this was a long time in coming. It took a national work group, folks across the country to develop these procedures. The EPA promulgated a technology that really hadn't worked out full measures of quality testing. In addition to that, we had to implement a process of testing out which gas standards worked adequately to test the system and to really give us confidence in our data. So once those were completed by the fall of 2020, our Quality Assurance Project Plan was completed and submitted to EPA. We also completed the standard operating procedures that fall under that plan. In January of this year, we provided the first air toxics data summary to the Air Pollution Control Board. And also around that time internally, APCD convened our own VOC work group that really takes in all the different sections of the district to thoroughly look at the data that this DC is producing and evaluate the data we're seeing and what to do moving forward with this data. Now, we're entering a period of evaluation and recalibration after we've performed some fairly extensive in-depth annual maintenance procedures. When we began this project, we wanted to really target several compounds. And those were a group of volatile organic compounds that were identified in the West Louisville Air Toxic Study. They were known as category one toxic air contaminants. They are in the STAR program. And these are the compounds on the left of the list. We also added several compounds that we knew were emitted in sizable quantities from emissions inventories and that also are precursors for ozone because they're very photochemically active in the atmosphere. A typical day for the Auto GC, every hour, it begins a 40-minute sample period. And then it uses the rest of the hour to separate the compounds within the system. We have 21 ambient samples per day, which means 21 valid concentrations for each chemical possibly for that day. We also use four hours of each day to run quality control checks. And these are very important for us to assess the ongoing, really the accuracy of the system and its performance. We use a zero air system blank after each of our standard cylinders. We use, we run a toxic cylinder to check the retention time of the instrumentation and a PAM cylinder. The toxic cylinder is designed to help us identify those compounds that, those category one compounds that we're looking for. The PAM cylinder is used to help us identify compounds within the PAM's program or the photochemical assessment monitoring system program. And then we run zero air checks to clean out the system following these standards and to make sure we zeroed out everything. Daily review, QC and QA for this system really looks like, these are chromatograms. And our chemist looks at these daily, the results, the instrumentation produces these on an hourly basis. And here you're checking for peak identification to make sure the system is identifying the compound correctly and integration, which it's measuring an accurate concentration. These, from time to time, need to be post-processed. For some compounds, they always have to be post-processed because they're very tricky in identification and integration. The quality control checks are also evaluated to help us determine identification of these compounds. As you can see on the right here, this is an example of several hours of benzene runs. The ambient runs are at the bottom. And then there's a run of the PAM standard, a run of the toxic standard. And those standards really help us identify that the system is measuring benzene in the proper retention time window and gives us some confidence in measurement of that compound. On a weekly basis, form a series of checks to make sure that all the quality control data is complete, representative of the conditions when measurements were made. We review Auto GC errors, both systematic errors and data errors. Look at the results of the quality control checks. Make sure post-process files are documented appropriately. And then we, you know, place air quality system qualifier and null codes. And what this does is gives information to the data user on the data we provide to the National Air Quality System. And once we begin submitting that data to that system, it will be fully verified, fully quality assurance, quality control check, and have full information for the end user. Also evaluate trends on a weekly basis. And got some examples of those coming up. The group takes daily chromatograms and just puts them into a time series plot. And this really can tell you if a particular compound is trending in a certain way, perhaps drifting off. This is just a weekly plot of benzene data. And it really gives a good graphical picture of benzene concentrations and how they're trending over time. Another way to do this is to plot, use a scatter plot to compare several compounds, in this case benzene and ethyl benzene. You would expect those to trend together. And as this plot is showing, they're doing so. You can really look for outliers here and identify any issues with the equipment. And then, of course, there's monthly validation on top of all these measures. We use the PAM standard to identify trends in the data on a monthly basis. Over time, we look at monthly averages and compare the monthly averages together to make sure we get a bigger picture of the data as we move along. The data quality scores is something that APCD derived on its own to help communicate confidence and quality of this data to public and data users. This is, gives us a very general indication of confidence and data quality and gives you a quick look of how we are feeling about the data after all of these quality assurance and quality control measures have been implemented. A more detailed version of this is obviously documented as part of the routine data review and validation process. But the scores just provide a quick snapshot of our confidence in this data. And of course, the Auto GC system measures many compounds and the data quality scores can vary from compound to compound. The raw DQS or Data Quality Score indicates the quality of raw data. And the post-process DQS indicates the quality of the data after manual processing. And oftentimes, post-processing is needed and really improves the quality score of the data. And this is how it's been designed. If there is a high confidence in peak identification and no significant collusion, meaning several compounds aren't measured at the same time and considered one compound. And if there's no carryover concerns, carryover is when one of the PAM's or toxic standard compounds remain in the system and isn't properly flushed out over time. If none of these problems occur, then we have a green data quality score. If none of these problems occur, then we have a green data quality score. If we have less confidence in peak identification or quantification due to coelution, carryover or other concerns, we give it a yellow score. And if the peak cannot be confidently identified in ambient chromatograms, we give it a red score. There's varying reasons for that, but sometimes the system releases several or several compounds are released at the same time, and it's impossible to identify one compound in that group of So where we are now, this is our current status, and obviously, this is subject to change as evaluation takes place, and we continue to improve these compound scores as we refine our quality assurance, quality control procedures. These are the target compounds that we listed earlier. As you can see, they're almost all green or yellow at this point. This is after post-processing. So we have several that are in the green that are easily, we have great confidence in these measurements. The yellow usually contains a little bit of an issue and involves some coelution, and we have a couple of compounds that, as of yet, we cannot identify because of strong This is the October 2020 data summary that we provided to the board. We provide here a monthly average of all the hourly average that the system produces, and we also give you a maximum 24-hour average. For reference here, we also provide the STAR cancer benchmark ambient concentration numbers, and these are numbers that are based on long-term exposure. And there's more information about that in STAR documentation on our website, as well as the STAR chronic non-cancer numbers. And again, these are long-term numbers that are based on health studies. We also give you the percent data recovery, and as you can see, most of these are really high, 83, 82% is about the highest you're ever going to see with all the quality assurance, quality control checks we run. That's going to knock it down from 100, obviously. Acrylonitral is a difficult chemical measure in this case, so there was a significant amount of coelution during this particular month. And if the board desires any other information on this type of report, please let us know, and we'd be glad to provide that if we can. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that was a quick update on our air toxics program.
Thank you. Does the board have questions? Mr. DeWitt, we appreciate the presentation. I got a couple, I guess. So, we submitted the quality assurance program and the SOP to the EPA. Do they comment and approve?
They do. They make comments on the quality assurance project plan, and those have to be approved by the EPA. They no longer approve the separate standard operating procedures, but they still evaluate them. It's not an official approval, but the quality assurance project plan is definitely under their purview, and it must be approved by EPA and submitted 90 days before actual valid data can begin to be monitored.
And what's this, I realize this may be uncertain, but what's the schedule for going completely online? And I realize it operates with a lot of direction and help, but is there a schedule for that? If I phrase that correctly?
I would say that it is completely online. It's just we were still going through a process of trying to improve our confidence in the data. We're very careful at this point not to submit any data to the air quality system that we can't have sufficient documentation of its quality because it's a, we don't want to submit poor data to the system. We want to make sure we've gone through this process adequately. And as I mentioned, this technology was originally tested by EPA for the PAMs program to measure ozone precursors, and they field tested them, but they really didn't do a lot with going back and doing some quality assurance procedures and some validity testing. So, that's really been up to those of us who use the equipment and to do in the field. So, we continue to refine those measurements. The system is online and running. We're getting more confidence in it every day. We've now installed a second system at our Cannon's Lane site, and that's the official PAMs equipment, but we expect to monitor the same compounds there, and then that'll give us a nice comparison between different parts of the city.
Thank you.
I have a question, Billy. What provisions do you have in case the monitors, monitoring system or the analyzer goes down and needs maintenance? And that that maintenance, you know, is critical, would take some time to do?
Well, our chemist is very active in monitoring the system, and when there's any issues, like I say, Andrea looks at this data on a daily basis. So, she's very active in making even significant repairs. In fact, she did all the annual maintenance on the system this time, which is a fairly significant project. Anything more intense than that, we would, we have a very close relationship with the vendor, and they're just in Cincinnati, so they've made many trips down to help us out with this technology, and so they're on, they're a phone call away, really. We hope to, at some point, also institute a program that will involve TO-15 canisters as a backup or possibly some quality assurance runs with those. So, that's another measure that we may add in the future.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Hamilton?
I want to thank Billy for his presentation this morning and let the board know that next month, in order to continue this conversation around the air toxics monitoring, we will be presenting on the Strategic Toxic Air Reduction Program, which are those comparative values shown on the report itself at this point.
Ms. Hamilton, I just wanted to point out there's a question in the Q and A for Mr. DeWitt as well.
Thank you. Could you share that?
Sure. James McDonald asks, it appears most STAR category one organics are being monitored, but not formaldehyde. Why is it formaldehyde being monitored?
That is a good question. The aldehydes are not something that this system is adequate to measure, so we will be adding carbon neal sampler to measure formaldehyde and other aldehydes at Cannon's Lane very soon. We'd like to also add that at Algonquin, and it will give us measurements of aldehydes. And also, we've been working with EPA Office of Research and Development on possibly acquiring and testing some continuous formaldehyde monitors, and so we hope to institute that sometime in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, we're ready for the presentation, I believe.
Hello, can you hear me? My name is David Burton. I'm a transportation planner at Kipton, and I've been for some time. I want to thank Mr. Sullivan, Ms. King, and Ms. Hamilton for having us on today. We really appreciate the time. Our focus here is to talk about our Metropolitan Transportation Plan update, and if it's okay with you guys, I'm going to share my screen and see if we can get this. Where do we need it? Give me just a moment, and I'll see what I can do here. All right, let's see. Okay, let me, give me half a second. I'm sorry, I thought I was ready to roll. But I don't have it, and it's, is it? So, I'm just going to go on without the presentation at this point. Four organizations, Jefferson, Oregon, Florida. We have had a long relationship. It's been a benefit to hopefully to do this well, and it's something that we value greatly. Our planning process or regulations is both from the Federal Highway, from the Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration, and EPA. Our key considerations and requirements is to make sure that our transportation plan can demonstrate a contribution to improving the air quality. So, we work closely with Michelle and Craig Butler, trying to make sure that our efforts are linked pretty firmly with your efforts so that we can work together and make sure that our transportation plan has air quality conformity. Mr. Burton, are you able to find the?
Yes, I'm changing the presenter mode here, and I will pull that up in just a second.
Okay, thank you, sir. So, there are some key pieces that we do at an NPO. The primary, one of the primary things we do is we collaborate and work with planning partners who are on our transportation policy committee. They are the local elected officials from throughout the five county area, as well as the Transportation Cabinet for Kentucky and the Department of Transportation for Indiana at TARP, which is by state. So, we have a very strong partnership. Thank you very much. Would you mind going to the next slide, sir? So, our focus is on transportation planning. We've talked about the by-state five county region, and now we're discussing the planning partners with whom we would not exist if we could not work with our partners. One of the key partners is the public, and that's one that's not seen really on very many organizational charts, but it's a key piece that we really value, and this is where we would like your help. We also focus on mobility and safety. We want to make sure people have options for moving around the region and can do so safely, and we think that will contribute to the betterment of our region and everyone's transportation experience. Next slide. When we talk about the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, we talk about 20-year vision. A lot of people confuse that with, I don't have to worry about what's in the transportation plan, it's not going to impact my life for another 20 years, but in reality, that will begin to impact your life the day after, the day after it's adopted by our Transportation Policy Committee. The federal requirement states that we have to, if you want to use federal transportation dollars in our region, you have to use our transportation plan in order to make sure that you are then eligible to receive those funds. So, if your project that you want to use federal funds is not in our transportation plan, then you cannot get federal dollars for it. We update, because we are not attainment for the pollutant ozone, we update our transportation plan every four years. So, ironically, Ms. Hamilton was referring to February 2020, the last time the board got together. February 2020 was the date in which our last transportation plan was updated or was approved by our policy committee. So, that was, that current plan is called Connecting Kentucky and the 2040, and has a horizon that takes us until 2040. The one we're working on now and have just started is it's the update to Connecting Kentucky and 2040, and it's going to go out to 2050. And again, I want to hit on the collaboration point. Because we deal with five counties and two states, there's a lot of handshaking and holding and holding hands that has to go on in order for us to do a better job of identifying what the issues are that need to be addressed, and from those issues, what kind of solutions we might want to consider. We, when we talk about transportation, we talk about sidewalks, bridges, freight system, roads, transit, every type of surface transportation mode that you can think of. We don't deal with water transportation, we don't deal with air transportation. Mr. Burton, if you could go to the next slide. So, what we're doing right now in this phase, we have just, just in January, last month, we kicked off with our Transportation Policy Committee update to our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And our focus is right now, right now, is trying to look at how we can identify issues. What are the types of things that people are experiencing as they drive to work, as they go to school, if they go to the park? What types of transportation issues are they having and where? So, what we've done right now is begun this campaign on identifying very specific location-based issues. And so, we have the tools that we've been available on that website below that will take you to a pin drop tool that we call, it's a GIS-based tool where you can drop a pin at any location along a particular route that you travel, and then you can, you can say, I sit too long in the stoplight, or I would ride my bike along this road if I felt safe, or if there were facilities. So, things along those lines. We want very specific detail issues, even if it's, there's a pothole outside my driveway, that's very important to what we're trying to identify because we can take that pothole comment, and we can translate up to maybe we need to do more about maintenance. So, every comment is important to us, and so we want you to go to this website. We want you to think about your trips that you make on a daily basis and ways that we can, or the issues you can identify that we might be able to address as we go forward with our Transportation Plan Update. There's also a survey we want you to take, and this survey covers more general information and provides a framework, if you will, of the types of things we want to make sure we, we look at and we think about when we complete our Metropolitan Transportation Plan Update. Mr. Burton, if you can go to my last slide, please. There are several ways to get involved in the planning process, and what we would like for you guys to help to take a few moments and complete the pin drop tool or, and the survey, and there are links right here that we're going to send you this presentation. But then, we want you to, if possible, share this information, and we're going to be, also be sending to Ms. Hamilton, the links that might be, might be used on your social media page or in your newsletter or things along those lines. We feel that the more people we can get engaged with when we try to identify issues, the better we can do in trying to identify the type of solutions that will, that will increase those multimodal options that will contribute to reducing the greenhouse gas emissions that are, that are, that come from transportation and have a better handle on what we need to look at when we go forward and we start to talk about the types of projects we want to include in our update to the transportation plan. So, that pretty much concludes our brief presentation. I've tried to keep it to a few minutes. We would love to have a conversation with you about what the board believes are important things that we want to address when we go forward with our Transportation Plan Update, but also we will hope that you'll help us spread the word, and that's something that can occur. Hopefully, in the next few days, we will send you some information that you might be willing to share on your, on your social media outlets and newsletter and things along those lines. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, I appreciate very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, for the presentation. Any questions, Mr. Burton? I want to do- I have one, do folks at ABCD, they participate in working group, ongoing conversations?
Yes, APCD is a very active member of one of our key committees, the Transportation Technical Coordinating Committee and they attend on a regular basis and are very vocal at those meetings, making sure that we address air quality concerns of the district and of our region. Yes, ABCD is an active participant.
Thank you. Any other question?
I would like to add, one of our transportation plans, Michaela, Jerry, put it in the chat, that link to the, to the issues page and if you would like to, if you would like to access it, you can find it there as well, but we will be sending you the other information that you might have, that you might be able to share for us.
Any other comments or anybody submit anything written? Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Hamilton, are we ready, is that the end of the director's report or do you have?
Yes, sir, it is, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. The air quality data report, environmental status report, access emissions report and the complaint investigation status summary were distributed previously electronically. And are there any questions on those reports from any of the board members? Okay, hearing none. I will now adjourn this regular meeting of the board. I want to thank you for your participation. I apologize for mispronouncing anyone's name. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March seventeenth at ten AM. And I'm pretty confident saying it'll be by video. So I think that's it. Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you very much.